Okay, we will go ahead and reconvene the special meeting of Folsom City Council. Any final action or report out of closed session, Mr. City Attorney?
None tonight.
Okay, thank you for that. So, we will adjourn special meeting of Folsom City Council and call to order the regular meeting of Folsom City Council for Tuesday, February 28, 2017. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sheldon?
Here.
Gaylord?
Here.
Howell?
Here.
Miklos?
Here.
And would everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so any agenda updates this evening, Mr. City Attorney?
If any, Mr. Mayor, none tonight, no update for tonight.
Okay. So with that, next item, please.
Your first scheduled presentation tonight is a resolution of commendation honoring Folsom Vista Junior Eagles for receiving the 2016 Soaring to Excellence Award.
All right, that's, you know, we were gonna do our budget stuff first, but we figured we would spare you. Now that, now Jim, Jim, our CFO is a little disappointed, but if some of you could stay after this, he would appreciate it.
I was sure they were all here for my birthday.
But no, this is, this is something we truly enjoy doing, is recognizing the youth in our community, so I, you know, I love to see the, the show of parents, and we'll do this as we usually do, and I know you've got the kids all organized out there, so I'm gonna call Fabian Biagetti up here to, and I'll read the proclamation, and then we'll start recognizing these scholar athletes. So we'll go ahead and read the proclamation here, and all these kids are gonna get a nice copy of the proclamation, and, and again, you know, this is great character in the community, kids that are busy and, and are, are still getting their, their schoolwork done, and we love to see that, and certainly recognize it here today. So, so with that, this is a resolution of commendation honoring the Folsom Vista Junior Eagles for receiving the 2016 Soaring to Excellence Award, whereas the Folsom Vista Junior Eagles are Youth Football and Cheer Association for the City of Folsom, whereas working in close alignment with the goals and achievements established by Vista del Lago High School, the association helps students prepare for success in future high school programs, whereas the Folsom Vista Junior Eagles have demonstrated commitment to both scholastic and athletic excellence, whereas the City of Folsom supports this commitment to superior academic and athletic achievement, and whereas to earn the award, members of the Folsom Vista Junior Eagles football and cheer teams maintained a grade point average of 3.0 or better during the football and cheer season. Now therefore, I Andy Morn, Mayor of the City of Folsom, on behalf of the Folsom Council and entire community, do hereby extend commendations of the highest regard to the Folsom Vista Junior Eagles for, for earning the Soaring to Excellence Award and encouraging their continued scholastic excellence in the future, past, and adopted this 28th day of February 2017. So we'll start, everybody, let's give these kids a nice round of applause here. Okay, so I'm gonna hand the floor over to Fabian here, and we will recognize all these young scholar athletes here.
Just a quick word on, on behalf of, as President of the Folsom Junior Eagles, I wanted to thank the council, the city, the mayor, for making time to recognize the students in the student-athlete portion of what we intend to do as a, a community organization. Wanted to just say a quick word to all the, the, the athletes, congratulations, we're proud of you, and always remember, like, we consistently remind you guys, we, we want you to compete in the classroom just as hard as you do in the field of play. So, well done, and congratulations. I'll pass it over to our VP of Football and Cheer.
Cadence Alder. Athletes, all of you, when you, when you get your certificate from the mayor, can you turn around and look at Katrina?
The TV camera's right up there, too, so.
Maya Pohorquez. Evelyn Boyd.
Aiden Edwards.
We ran out of our copies of proclamation, so we owe about seven of these, all right? Okay, and they'll be even better than the ones I handed.
Come with a treat. Last but not least, Kendall Wilson.
That's it, we got everybody? So, I just wanna add, you know, the parents are a big part of this, but as we all know, the volunteers that really step up, the coaches for these kids, it wouldn't happen without them, so my thanks to you folks, I know you've got a board, it's incredible the number of coaches, because you have all these divisions, and you've got the, the cheer and the football, and it's a, it's a real team, so my thanks to everybody who really puts this together and, and makes this activity, you know, it just means so much to these kids, and they'll remember it for their whole lives, so, so my thanks to all of you for making this possible for these kids, so have a great evening, time to go get some homework done.
Hard to think of this from before Don Boya. He's got one on his hand.
Yeah, 'cause we did, we got. All right, I think we can. Okay, that was our first item on our scheduled presentation, so next item, please.
Your second scheduled presentation tonight is the presentation of an economic overview and budget forecast.
Right, good evening, Jim.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and I'm so thrilled we had a big turnout tonight for this. One of these days, I'm gonna get everybody to stay.
At least they could not laugh when we ask if they're staying for the budget presentation.
So, tonight, what I'm gonna do is present some of the preliminary budget considerations for you, we'll go over just some very high-level and brief economic information, some of the purposes and some of the more macro numbers in terms of the budget preparation, and really all of that's designed to, for you to make comments and give direction to the administration as we build next year's budget, and I'll try and do this fairly briefly for you. Terms of the economic environment, and I'll go over these real quick, home sales are up, home prices are up, consumer confidence is up, building permits are up, our employment levels are up, our employment, unemployment is down, our auto sales are up, and our consumer spending's up. Now that all is true right now, and we are basing all of our assumptions for the next fiscal year based on those trends. Just a few quick views of that information, you can see on the unemployment rate, this is the unemployment rate every January since 2008, and during the recession, we went up to about 7.7, and now we're down at 3.2 as of this January. That's, not only is that obviously a, a good number for us, but it's the lowest one in the, in not only the county, but in the region. House sales, median price, were up to about 4.80, which is roughly just as, as the recession began, and we anticipate that going up into the 500 range for next fiscal year, and that's been a continuous growth since '12, when we hit the, the bottom of, of that cycle. Auto sales, this is by fiscal year, have grown again since fiscal year '09, up to 15,300. We anticipate this year, now this is a fiscal year, so this is only halfway through, we expect this to be about 15.7 at the end of the year, which is about a 3% growth, and we anticipate about a 3% growth in auto sales next year. Some comparison on that, because those obviously are good numbers, but showing some of the history of car sales going back, you can see prior to the recession, we were in the 20, well, the top was almost 24,000 cars, and all of these are in the 22,000 range. Recession, we fell down all the way to less than 9,000 trucks and cars, so that's, that was a huge drop for us, and now we've come back from that certainly, but we don't see that growth being like this growth going down, it's gonna be about 3% is what we're looking for out in the future. So those are just some of the more general overall economic indicators that we have. Again, we anticipate those trends going on next year. In terms of putting the budget together, there's four principles that we try and follow during the entire process, one is the sustainability of our finances, and that is, we don't wanna have things that we can't sustain into the future, so the things that we put in there are gonna have a lifespan, something we can maintain rather than a one-shot, and then, unless obviously if we buy vehicles, but we wanna continue certainly to have a vehicle replacement policy. Transparency to the public, certainly we want the budget to reflect so that it's easy to find for the budget what's in there, what money's being spent on. Accountability for results, when you adopt a budget, you certainly expect us to be accountable for implementing what you've approved, and we want that to be clear in the budget, and last but not least, the responsiveness to the community, and some of that will be some of your comments tonight, we hope, in terms of what you expect the community would want to see in the budget. Terms of some early projections on our major revenues, we're looking at, for property taxes, some solid growth, about 5.7%, we've averaged the last three years about 5.9, so we're right in that category, sales tax is at 6.1, and we've been slightly under that, about 5.8 in the last three years. Charges for services is in at 2%, which is roughly a cost of living, there are, at the preliminary one, there are no fee increases, as we go through the budget, we may suggest one or two to you, but in the preliminary budget, there are none. Transfers in is down, and that really reflects just a one-time spending we had, a little over a million dollars, so that's really kind of flat if you take that out, and then all our other revenue is about 2% increase, and that's right in line with what we would expect to see with those. Our total revenue, we're looking at about a 2% increase, if you take away that one-time expenditure from this column, that goes down to about 78 million, and you'd be about a 3.3% increase, and that's right in line with what we've been seeing, somewhere between 3 and 4% increase in revenues in the past three years and going forward. On the expense side, major budget drivers, you're looking at wages, and that's about 2.25%, and that reflects not only the COLA of 2.5% that was granted to all the employees, but you're looking at step increases, which would be roughly another 2.5%, and you also have a minimum wage increase during the year that is going to impact our, at least our part-time wages, and that's all kind of offset with the, with the incentive that we had, so without the incentive, which we had about 44 people leave, that number would be up closer to 5% or above. Retiree health is up 450,000, and again, that reflects the early retire, not the early, but the incented retirees that retired and now will be beginning retiree health services. PERS, the retirement system is up 738,000, about 7%, and we'll talk a little bit more about that, because they've made some changes that are gonna have a significant impact on us for the next five to seven years, and this does not reflect those changes, this would be what we would've had anyway without those. Or I, more correctly, I should say, it reflects changes they made previous to this, because they keep making more additional ones. Other benefits are- Other benefits are up about 2.6%, and that's right in line with cost of living. Both operations and maintenance and capital are down, and again, in terms of a preliminary look to budget, only because of those one-time kinds of expenditures that we had, that we are not including in the upcoming budget. And then debt is up, and that reflects simply the SAICOG grant that we got for the park that we have to repay in five years, so it's the debt payment on that particular debt. So we're up roughly 3%, and that represents an as-is budget. That is, if we don't do anything differently, and we don't add anything either on an operational side, or wage side, or anything else, it would come in at about 3%. Now, I said I'd talk a little bit more about the retirement costs. They have calculated, they have sent us how they're going to recalculate the contribution that the city makes to PERS, and it will be a different method of calculating our unfunded liability. They gave us a series of formulas to try and figure out what that meant, and we've applied those to these numbers. You can see that this is this year's number, $10 million for our contribution. Next year's will be that $738, and that, again, does not include the changes, includes some old changes where they raised the retirement average, the expected life of a retiree, and some things like that, but not the new changes. The new changes start in 1819 fiscal year, and you'll see it's going to be an increase of $1.5 million. The year after that, $2.1 million, and then $1.5, $1.2, and a million. So we'll be up with significant increases that will actually, the $1 million will go on for about two or three more years beyond this. So you can see in six years, we're going to go from $10.4 million to $18.6 million, an $8.2 million increase, and again, this is really an as-is budget, so if we don't make any changes. We did put in some salary increases that reflect the COLAs, but we really didn't do anything more than that, so that is what our picture would be like. My guess is that we're in a lot better shape than some of the other communities to attack this, but nonetheless, this will make probably about 60% to 70% of your expected revenue increases will go to these increases. And to show that, I put this chart together, which shows the blue line being our revenues, red line being our expenses, and you can see back right at the end of the recession where we were still spending from our fund balance the last year of it. Then we crossed the line, and we started adding to our fund balance up through here, and our proposed, we would still add to it. In '19, we would still add to it, but in '20, it would start to change, and they'd be about even, and then the lines reverse themselves in the outer years. Again, there's, we're a number of years away from that. There, you know, obviously, things can change between now and then. It represents about a 2% swing in our revenues or expenses, and so I don't mean to have this be alarming in the sense of the chart, but just that, we need to be aware of the impact of that change in what we adopt as a budget.
Yeah, just a quick comment on that, you know, related to the pension costs. It needs to be emphasized that certainly, we don't like to see that sort of news, but it's a very conservative approach by Cal PERS to make sure that investment assumptions aren't greater than they really should be. And what it does is it ensures that our unfunded liability is minimized, so that the money's there, and we're not, you know, racing ahead as far as benefits that we aren't able to pay and that sort of stuff. So it is tough, but I do appreciate the long-term outlook there because we, you know, we can't shy away from exactly what we're going to be faced with down the road, and we're very adept at preparing for something like that, so.
And then this is just another look at our unfunded general fund balance. Again, during the recession, we went from $16 million down to $4 million. We went, spent actually $12 million during the recession, and now we've built it back up to a little over $12 million, so we've kind of positioned ourselves well again. That's beyond your adopted policy of 15%. We're, we anticipate being at 16.5 at the end of the fiscal year. And then just again, a reminder of our appropriations by function, which have been fairly stable over the years, with general government being about 8%, public safety is about 60% of your budget. Community development and public works has grown, and that was intentional because of the maintenance of effort that we had to show in those areas with the state, using some of the state money, and we had to have a certain proportion of it. So that was an intentional growth in that area. And parks and rec and cultural services, which is the library, is around 14%, 14.5 at the end here. And non-departmental has gone from 14% down to 9. So those are all trends, again, we want to be, we want to recognize. It helps in developing the community as a whole, and we just bring those again to your attention. In terms of the priorities in the, in building the budget, we certainly are looking towards continuing to build the fund balance in our reserves. We do want to address deferred maintenance, and that's both in buildings and in vehicles. We've started certainly making an investment in vehicles and vehicle replacements that has been necessary. Most of that was cut out during the recession, but we want to maintain that program and continue it. We certainly don't want any of our core services to be diminished at all, so we want to keep those and strengthen those. We want to invest for the future, and that's, you know, one of the issues being to keep in mind the PERS numbers and how that might impact us in the future. And then, as we saw in the slide before this, just maintaining that comprehensive community balance as one of the considerations. Our next steps in the budget are, at the end of April, we'll present you the recommended, the city managers' recommended operating and capital budgets. You then have till, actually, the end of June to adopt that, and we've scheduled public hearings and possible adoption at several different dates, and again, limits are a required limit we have to adopt by the state that we're not even close to in terms of the limits of taxation is what that represents. But you do have to do that by June 30th also, so that's the schedule we've tentatively adopted. And at that, I'll leave it open for your comments and guidance.
Right. Thanks, thanks, Jim. So questions or comments?
So I'm sure all of us saw the email from the retired fire chief, and it's something we've talked about, because I know you've been building the budget in for the staffing. So maybe a footnote, when it comes back, is a footnote on timeline for the actual construction of the Station 39, and then the timeline of when we actually have enough of positions absorbed within the budget, we actually start staffing it, because I know we're getting pretty close to that saturation point for the two to meet up, so.
Okay.
And I agree with, by the way, I agree with the mayor. We just went through this budget at SAICOG, and we actually upped our contributions there. We actually brought our reserve contribution up to almost 35, 40% of the budget to get ahead of it. So I applaud you on the same assumptions you guys are doing, because that's extremely important. It's a commitment we made to the employees, and certainly, the employees want to see that there when they retire, so. And the community certainly doesn't want to see us going to red because we didn't plan accordingly, so I agree with the mayor. I think it's the prudent thing to do, and I agree with you too, Jim. We're one of the few jurisdictions that are actually really doing it, so, good job.
Thanks, Steve. Any other questions, comments?
No, it just points out that we have to, we have to be on top of it, because we're not out of this yet, and we don't know what the next four years are going to bring us. Okay, it could be kind of auto reactions, okay, good and bad, so I think you're on the right track.
And I guess my just final comment would be is, this exercise has gotten interesting, I mean, it was very interesting during the recession years and really having to, you know, pull some rabbits out of the hat just to kind of maintain services, and as you saw, we spent reserves to soften the blow. But, you know, between the consistency in staff and messaging, consistency in the council, it almost has gotten a little mundane, but in a good way. You know, I think there's a clear understanding of what's important to this council as far as balance, and, you know, you showed that in some of those slides there, Jim, so I just, I look forward to seeing another great set of recommendations. I know, you know, no department gets everything they want, and I never blame anybody for asking, but, you know, at the end of the budget process, especially in these recent years, it's been nice to see the reinvestment in the community, you know, the deferred maintenance catching up on that, so I just applaud the balance in the process, and there's probably going to be little that we really nitpick on, but we look forward to seeing details and nitpicking. So, and thanks, Jim, for opening with that. You know, this is preliminary, so for folks who heard this today or see this on the telecast, you know, please reach out to us, and if there's something that's important that you see is missing, and I know our finance group's always good, there's so much information on our website related to finance in the past and things that are proposed, so thanks for all the great work, Jim, for you and your department, and thank you to Everett for withstanding and appealing to all the demands of the community and the departments.
Great, great job to you and your staff, and thanks for thinking about the, both the upside and the potential downsides, because that's what we need to worry about.
Thank you. Steve?
And I was going to say, on the one slide, I think you guys aren't doing enough to where you should be patting yourselves on the back. Instead of transparency, continue transparency. We've been doing that, and you guys have been, ever since you guys came in, when I say you guys, I mean, there were some really good people before, but Jim, I got to tell you, ever since you got here and the staff you have surrounded yourself with, that budget is one of the easiest documents to ever read in City Hall, and I know from experience, so I would say continue transparency, because you've done a wonderful job.
Thanks, thanks again, Jim.
I echo the same, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Roger.
I had a quick question. What's the difference in variance on the PERS slide from the '21, the year '21, it was like double, and then it goes back down to the one halfway? What's the?
The, what happens in a couple of those years is, we have an extra charge for the incentive that we had to make, and that goes away.
Okay.
So it dips a little bit and then comes back up.
Okay, cool. It's, I like seeing the healthy balance on there, so the reserve fund is definitely.
That, and I suspect they'll probably change the game before we get to those later years, anyway.
Yeah, I would think.
They change their assumptions every couple of years, depending upon how their investments go.
Right.
Thanks, anything else?
Great job, Jim.
All right, great, thanks, thanks again, Jim. Okay, with that, next item, please.
Your next item, Mr. Mayor, is Business from the Floor. You have one speaker card request from B. Smith.
Okay, B. Smith, Bill, Bill Smith. All right, Bill, you got, you have three minutes here, Bill. Good evening, Bill.
Good evening, Folsom, and happy 28th day of February. I understand the president is making a speech today. My brother used to say Mick for president. I said, no, no, precedent. I realized something about six months ago. Mayor Miklos had asked me for a couple of pages of my notes. I just gave you one from today. I had done a group buy, it takes a village, and there was a company that Apple bought. I had done a promotion at the Macintosh Group in Berkeley. I got the heckle of people for 15 years and get all my buddies to come down and help them fix the things. I was able to say hello to Bill Gates, and he had dropped out of Harvard, and so he had stopped talking, and like Donald Trump had stopped talking at Moscone Center. So I said to the 6,000 people, solar energy, and he had his non-answer. And then somebody said, if he's going to be president, do it, do it, do it, do it. No, he said, do, anyway. So what I'm dealing with here this evening is speaking to you about a follow-up on what I spoke about in public a couple of days ago. I don't want Joe Ching to be able to follow what I'm doing, because Mayor Miklos had asked me for two pages of my notes back in April, and I had to go and get six different computers at Fry's in order to get one to work on System 10. Bill is now doing Gates. I was able to speak to him at the Macintosh Group, so people don't forget me, and they always kick me upstairs. What I've been realizing is seven different properties I've been looking at around the community, and next door, and the next counties, and I found a location I'd like to speak you about off-record, and what I've realized doing, somebody mentioned Harry last time, a couple of meetings ago, and Suzie used to live across the street from me, back in my town where I came from with the business people, and small businesses built the country, and so my town was putting itself on the map. And I just saw something on my school, it was where they had 800 students back just after the war, there was 800 kids at my school, and it's 100 years old now, it just turned 100 years old. My sixth-grade teacher said, come back and visit sometime, I want to see you successful. So I thought I saw her one day when I was down in Silicon Valley, passed by me in a car. I was on the way to the Patent Library, and the lady at the Patent Library told me I had made more progress and gone through and gotten what I was looking for quicker than anybody else she'd ever come into place. So what I realized today was doing a sidewalk strider for the kids who were at least three feet tall, because I'm looking to do my Smitty, what I'm calling the Utopian vehicle.
Getting close to the end of your three minutes, Bill, so if you could wrap up for us.
With a sidewalk strider, you could get in shape for what I'm going to recommend for the general plan. I didn't bring that page, it'd be real easy to read, and it's kind of long, but what it's going to be able to do is an ultimate maximum supreme super sports ability facility.
Okay, Bill.
Which will monitor you with all your chemistry, so you can build up and be a happier person.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Mary.
All right. Okay, any other requests to speak on Business from the Floor?
You have no other requests to speak.
Okay, so with that, next item, please.
That takes us to your consent calendar.
Okay, so, gosh, no request to pull, no request to speak?
I'll move consent.
I just commented on one.
Okay, so which one, Ernie?
C.
I'll move A, B, and D through G.
A second. Okay, moved and seconded, please call the roll.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Miklos.
Yes.
And Morin.
Yes, and item 7C.
I want to thank Mark and the managers about making this happen, because I'd been watching that, and I go by there quite often, and it's much needed. I think it will really solve a lot of, especially the new people in town, they think they should stop, and I'm always afraid somebody's going to come back and push them into somebody else. So I want to thank you for your efforts in doing that, because I think it's a good move.
Okay, thank.
That I moved.
Second. I'll move the item.
Okay, so Ernie moved and seconded by Vice Mayor Howell, and just, Ernie jumped into that before a clerk had a chance to read that item, so that's a resolution number 9883. It's a resolution authorizing the Public Works Department to install an always-stop sign control at the intersection of Toma Street and Sibley, so that is what.
Just one other comment though, Mark, can we keep an eye on that and make sure that we don't get, that we're not getting a cue that's going into the previous either light or stop sign, depending upon where we're going?
Great, so motion and a second, please call the roll on item 7C.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Miklos.
Yes.
And Morin.
Yes. Next item, please.
Okay, your next item is your first public hearing of the evening. It is ordinance number 1272, an ordinance amending section 17.28.21 of the Folsom Municipal Code regarding permitted uses in the M1 light industrial zone. This will be introduction and first reading of the ordinance. This will be introduction and first reading of the ordinance.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name's Stephanie Henry, and I am an associate planner with the Community Development Department. David Miller is out of town this week, so as a result, I have the privilege of presenting this first item to you this evening for public hearing. I will try to keep this as simple and straightforward as possible.
Just like David does, right?
Okay, yeah. So as you're aware, the Community Development Department is continually reviewing the zoning ordinance to, in an effort to bring forth common sense modifications in order to promote economic growth and alleviate any type of, any type of regulations that do not help in assist with new development of new businesses or existing businesses. So in this particular case, staff was approached by a business owner in the city of Folsom who was inquiring about regulations pertaining to microbreweries in the city of Folsom. Upon staff's initial assessment of microbrewery-type facilities in the city, staff believed that a microbrewery facility would fit within the parameters of permitted uses within the city's light industrial or M1 zoning district. And this was based on a couple of factors. First of all, microbreweries are small manufacturers, so that seemed to fit within parameter of light industrial. Secondly, within the zoning ordinance, it specifically states that bottling facilities are permitted uses within light industrial zone districts. So since microbreweries are in the process or brew beer and bottle it, it seemed that likely that would follow that a microbrewery facility would be permitted as a bottling type of facility. And finally, as you are aware, we have an existing beverage manufacturer in the city of Folsom, GeckoCon, which manufactures sake and is in a light industrial zoned area of the city. So based on those three factors, staff believed that a microbrewery type of facility would be permitted in a light industrial zone district. However, as indicated in the staff report, staff identified what staff believed to be a discrepancy in the code. And the specific provision in the code states that uses that are permitted in the general commercial or C3 zoning district with a conditional use permit are permitted in the M1 light industrial zoning district with a conditional use permit. So staff felt, okay, you have one section of the code, when you read portions of it, it seems that this light, this use would be allowed in light industrial, but then when you read this other provision, it's not allowed unless you have a conditional use permit. So staff did a little deeper dive into the commercial use table and was able to identify several other light industrial zoned, or light industrial type of uses in that commercial table that required a conditional use permit in the C3 zone, and as a result, would require a conditional use permit in the M1 zoning district. So staff believes that is problematic. For example, light assembly requires a conditional use permit in the C3 zone, so under the provision I was speaking about, light assembly should require a conditional use permit in the M1 zone, which M1's set up for. So logically, we felt that we needed to address this issue. So simply, the way we propose to address this is we identified five specific types of uses, and I can show you a slide if you want. This is kind of staff's analysis. Can I go back? Okay, my apologies. So basically, this slide is just a brief analysis, or a brief summary of staff's analysis. In the left-hand side, we have the five light industrial uses that staff identified that are in the commercial land use table that require a conditional use permit in C3. Building trade service yard, assembly light manufacturing, garage equipment sales, microbrewery, and billboard sign agency. When we looked at uses permitted in the M1 zone that are specifically described, we saw that, like, building trades requires a use permit on one end, but then construction of material yards, which is similar, is permitted. And then when we looked further and looked at the type of business we already have in M1, we saw Siblon Reed. So kind of following that logic with each of those, we determined that it made sense for us to take these five uses and actually identify them as permitted uses in the light industrial zoning code. So that's the, that's the purpose of this ordinance. With that being said, the Planning Commission did review this ordinance on their February 1st Planning Commission meeting, and they recommended approval of this ordinance to be moved forward to City Council. It should be noted, however, that there was a pretty robust discussion at that Planning Commission meeting, and that was with regards to the microbrewery use and potential odor impacts that might be associated with that type of use. Prior to moving forward with proposing this ordinance, staff had done some surveying of local jurisdictions to see how they were handling these types of facilities. And in almost every case, the microbrewery use was an allowed use in their light industrial zone areas. And in addition, when staff asked if there were any, any history of any nuisance, like noise or odor, associated with these uses, in each case, the jurisdictions stated that there were none that they were aware of. Staff also had reached out to the Sacramento Metropolitan Air Quality District and asked them about these type of facilities to find out if there were any regulations. They had stated that there were no regulations with these type of facilities, and in addition, they'd only had one complaint, and it was with regards to odor for this type of facility. That facility was in Sacramento, it's no longer there, but this facility, this particular instance, the facility was venting their emissions out sideways because they were below a parking garage. And so instead of the standard of venting up into the atmosphere, they were venting out sideways onto a sidewalk. And the air district believes that was probably the reason that they were having an odor issue at all. So in addition to providing the Planning Commission with that information, we also had a consultant from Helix, Robert Edgerton, who is familiar with these type of facilities and has done some environmental review pertaining to them. So he gave some information to the Planning Commission. And we also had a local business owner, Eric Schmidt, who operates the Brewmeister and is very familiar with the brewing process. He also provided the Planning Commission with some information that he could provide. And with all of that information, the Planning Commission felt that they were comfortable recommending approval of this ordinance. So with that, I'd like to say I can answer any questions you may have, but also, Mr. Edgerton is here tonight, just in case somebody had some questions pertaining to his experience.
Just, just to clarify, the discussion, I'm a little bit confused as to why the discussion even went to that arena about the odor at the Planning Commission, and I was told that it had to do with the discussion about the Sriracha plant in Los Angeles. And that's completely, you know, hot peppers and beer are two totally different things.
Right. Yeah, I'm not certain. I think the Planning Commission had a couple questions regarding it and wanted to get a little bit more knowledge of how these facilities operate.
I'm just, I'm a little bit surprised because I've been to several of those, those types of places, and I, you know, God gave me a really big nose, and it works quite effectively. And it, I've never noticed an odor from it.
Well, you know, I think, I think it was just some uncertainty. I think those were fair questions and were addressed, so, so, yeah, I, but, but, yeah, it's.
From my understanding, it's the type of brewery, like the type of brew you're brewing that would produce some type of odor. I don't know if that's correct, but that was one of the issues. I saw that Planning Commission in meeting, and that was one of the issues. And if you do some research, you do see that, depending on, like, if it's an ale or something like that. But generalizing, to me, generalizing the business as a bottling plant and not its initial usage being a brewery, or, for example, Sriracha or something like that, because Sriracha could be bottling as well. So I guess I'm, I'm more inclined for this, but one of my issues would be ensuring that residents don't have some greater impact that was, you know, just slid through because it falls under that general category, you know? So.
Right, so.
But you have to look at where the, where the C3 and the M1 zoning is, and for the most part, you're not, you're not near houses.
In my understanding, too, as part of the Health Department licensing, they have to have air scrubbers anyways. There's a certain particular, forget the air quality for it, but there's also a Health Department issue where they can't release into the air, and you probably know more than I do, Andy, with your restaurants, there's a scrubber, similar to what we have at GeckoCon, similar to what we have at Kikaman, pardon me, that does cut down the potential for that odor, because they have to scrub the air before it even vented anyways, which is probably why the Air Quality District has had, not had any issues with the area.
We just make sure the good odors are the ones that get out.
Yeah.
So, no, but, but great question, and great presentation, Stephanie. So any other questions for Stephanie?
Look at staff report, too. Very comprehensive. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I vote for the public hearing.
Okay, so with that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak?
You have no speaker requests.
Okay, so no speaker requests, nobody.
I'll move the staff recommendation.
I will close public hearing, and the ordinance moved by Vice Mayor Howell, seconded by Councilmember Miklos. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Sheldon.
Yes.
Gaylord.
Yes.
Howell.
Yes.
Miklos.
Yes.
And Moran.
Yes, and great work on cleaning that up for us.
Go forth and brew.
Okay.
The other ones, too.
Next item, please.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, your second public hearing item tonight is ordinance number 1273. This is an ordinance amending certain sections in Title 17 of the municipal code regarding second dwelling units. And again, this will be introduction and first reading of the ordinance. It is a public hearing, and you have one speaker card.
Okay. Gosh, Stephanie's up again, huh?
All right. Hello again, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. So this next item, I will try to keep maybe even simpler than that first item, but this, as you may be aware, the California Government Code, Section 6585.2, requires that local governments use a ministerial process for second dwelling unit applications. The primary intent of the state's accessory dwelling, as they put it, accessory dwelling unit law, is for additional housing, provide for additional housing opportunities in an efficient and affordable manner, and to eliminate any unnecessary excessive or and/or burdensome requirements or barriers. And should a community not have a second dwelling unit ordinance in its municipal code, then state law becomes the governing law. So based on that, in 2008, the City Council decided to adopt a second dwelling unit ordinance in our existing second dwelling units, provides a ministerial approval for second dwelling units within any residential zoning district with certain, subject to certain criteria, such as minimum lot size, owner occupancy requirements, and then also development standards such as setbacks, height, and maximum size limits.
Are those established locally, or is that also state-established?
So the development standards and the setbacks are established locally.
Okay.
So on September 27th of last year, Governor Brown signed two bills. It was Assembly Bill 2299 and Senate Bill 1069. These two laws, which actually took effect January 1st of this year, basically state that all municipal or local jurisdictions need to remove any discretionary provisions of their accessory dwelling unit ordinances. And it also includes additional changes where they are now regulating parking setbacks, utility and passageway requirements. As indicated in the staff report, this ordinance has two primary purposes. The first purpose is to amend our existing second dwelling unit ordinance to align with state law, so that we're in compliance with state law. And then secondly, since we were in the process of reviewing our second dwelling unit ordinance, we felt prudent to go ahead and make some minor modifications that would help clear up some language that staff felt was ambiguous and or unclear. So those are the two, two objectives. For the most part, the state regulations do not seem to have very much of an impact on our existing process of regulating second dwelling units. There are some notable modifications. One is that there's now 120-day time limit placed on either approving or denying the second dwelling unit application once it's presented to the Building Department. It probably won't be a big deal because we're pretty quick at turning these around anyhow.
Well, that and, you know, the fact that because of the changes in state law, it's very difficult for us not to approve it.
Right.
So you have 120 days to say yes.
Mm-hmm. Another thing is a lot of the architects that develop their second dwelling units are pretty on board with city requirements, and they kind of have it locked in of how to do it and get the process going quickly. So that's helpful, too. The other notable modification is currently our second dwelling unit aligned with state law that stated when there was an addition to a home, that was considered an accessory dwelling unit. So that the maximum area could be 30% of the existing residence of an increase in floor area. The new law has it at 50%. So now 50% of the house can be increased by 50% of its existing size. That makes sense.
Is that if it's a second unit, or if it's just an expansion of the existing house?
That's only if it's considered a second dwelling unit.
Which means you'd have to have another kitchen, you'd have to have another bathroom.
Yes.
Okay.
And probably the most profound, profound requirement that will likely have an impact on the way that we currently regulate second dwelling units is that the state's law limits our ability to regulate parking within certain parameters.
Well, to, just to state that clearly, basically, this change in state law eliminates our ability to, our ability to require that the property owner provide parking for the residents of the granny flat or whatever the second unit is.
Right.
And I think that's very, very, very important, and for the city of Folsom, in my personal opinion, it's a really bad idea. Unfortunately, there isn't anything we can do about it.
Well, I guess I have a question related to that. So, you know, we've talked about, and I don't think we've done this maybe once near the high school, but where you, we require kind of permitted parking in front of houses. I mean, is there an end-run game you could play to try and, you know, because I think what we all fear is, is that you'd have this overflow parking, you know, just all over the streets and neighborhoods, and, you know, some of that exists already anyway, but it could get really impactful. Yeah, I mean, are there other ways to regulate that some way? I mean, not that I would ever be interested in that, but I'm just interested in what other people might suggest we do. So.
Yeah, so at staff level, we can keep our eyes open and see what other jurisdictions are doing.
I think the difficulty here is that, at least in my mind, the objective of this was to, was for the state to back up after having pulled all the redevelopment agency funding and come up with something that appeared to be an incentive to create affordable housing. However, we're not in the urban core of downtown LA or in Folsom, where the existing second units are predominantly in the historic district. They are anything but affordable. And there's a number of others that are planned who will also be anything but affordable. It would be far less expensive in Folsom to rent an apartment than it would be to rent a granny flat in the historic district. And I suspect that we're going to see a lot more of them. And I think that people need to understand that these are not in transit-oriented developments. If you live in a granny flat in the historic district, you probably are still going to need a car to go to. need a car to go to the grocery store because there isn't a grocery store within walking distance. And it's, you know, this is, we are a very, very different place than I think these rules and regulations were, were intending to address. So my concern in the, in the long run is making sure that the landowners who choose to do this disclose to their potential tenants, oh, by the way, I either do or do not have a parking space for you. We can't make them, give them a parking space, but I think we should be able to make them disclose that they have a designated space to park or they don't. That might be one way to, to try to resolve this issue. Because, you know, we've had that, we've had that conversation, and I know that we do have time limitations on parking over by Folsom High School because of, you know, the kids that were parking in the neighborhood. But that's only during the school year, and it's only certain times of the day. And I know there's been a few people that have come forward with wanting resident parking permits in the historic district. And I think this council on, has discussed it on several different occasions, and we're not anywhere close to being there. So, and we have a unique situation because if we limit parking, then we hurt one of our business districts in town. So it's very disappointing that the state is pretending to solve a problem doing things like this because it's not, it doesn't solve any problems here.
Right.
I would be very interested to hear how the surrounding communities are handling that as well.
Yeah, well, we definitely can, like I said, take a look at that. Because this is new, so I'm sure some of them will be tackling this as well.
Anything else, Stephanie? To tell us, to tell us how we're being forced to do some things?
I guess I would just close with stating that the planning commission did review this and did recommend approval to the city council. And I think it's important that we, we at least keep our second dwelling unit ordinance so that we still have some, some ability to, you know, regulate setbacks, height, lot coverage, so that we can keep our.
Absolutely. And I'm sorry, I didn't mean for that to come across as criticism at you. The staff did a great job. I'm just frustrated by the state's actions and how I think it's going to have an adverse effect on, on the historic district here.
Right.
Okay, great. Any more questions for Stephanie before I open a public hearing? All right, so we go ahead and open the public hearing. And do we have any requests to speak?
You have one request to speak from Candy Miller.
All right. So what do you think of all this, Candy?
I'm glad it's not your fault that this is happening. Mainly, I just wanted to come down tonight, and you're all very aware that this is going to have a huge impact in the historic district if we can't require these second units to at least provide one parking space. And I mainly want to tell the audience that's watching, when those cars are parked in front of your house because your neighbor built a granny flat and didn't provide for it, don't call a historic district commissioner. Do not call a city council person. Pick up the phone and call your state representative.
All right.
Thank you.
Well said, Candy. Okay, so no, no other requests?
As soon as we start getting complaints about that, we'll probably give the name and phone number of whoever that state representative will be at the time.
Okay, so I will go ahead and close the public.
Move the item.
Second.
First reading.
Okay, moved by Councilmember Miklos, seconded by Vice Mayor Howell. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Miklos?
Yes.
And Morin?
Yes, and so we will.
Good job, Stephanie.
Yeah.
Good job.
So with that, we will go ahead and convene the joint city council successor agency, public financing authority, Folsom South of 50, parking authority, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority meeting.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Here.
Gaylord?
Here.
Howell?
Here.
Miklos?
Resident.
And Morin?
And here. And let's see, what do we have item-wise here?
Your only item on this joint meeting, Mr. Mayor, is your consent calendar.
I will move consent.
Okay, so consent moved by Vice Mayor Howell, seconded by Councilmember Miklos, and the consent calendar is shorter than the title of the convened meeting.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Howell?
Yes.
Miklos?
Hi.
And Morin?
Yes, and with that, we will reconvene the good old, plain old city council meeting. And city manager comments.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Just a few notes this evening. The parade of preliminary presentations on the public review draft for the general plan continues at the Parks and Recreation Commission this Tuesday, March 7th, at 6:30 PM. So if you didn't have a chance to hear it at one of the, one of the commissions last month, and there's certainly more coming up, this will be in front of the council in a preliminary fashion on March 28th. So there'll be two real good opportunities. You, of course, can also review the public draft at folsom2035.com. So encourage everybody to go look at it online now. Also, something I'm very proud of, as we look to the future with our general plan, we're also very tied to our past. And our Names About Town website debuted just a couple of weeks ago, where we are looking at all of the names of folks, you know, past and present that, upon whose shoulders we stand. I think I've talked about this once before, but our website is out there. Encourage everybody to go look at it. So if you're curious as to who Dante Lemby might be and where we got the name for Lemby Park, or Horatio Livermore, or any number of people whose names are about town, you can find those answers on our website at www.folsom.ca.us and under Names About Town. We're also planning our annual community service day, which is September 16th of this year. And for those of you that haven't heard about it, it's a really major event where we leverage our extraordinary volunteer talent. Last year, we had about 2,500 volunteers. We did about 40 projects around town. And it's one opportunity in one day to do a tremendous amount of good. We have a community brainstorming meeting scheduled for March 22nd at 5:30 PM. And that meeting is where? At the community center. That's a good place for it. And just to put in a quick plug for one of our great volunteer groups, the Friends of the Library, they are hosting their library book sale on March 10th through 12th, about 4,000 books, CDs and DVDs at deeply discounted prices. That sale goes on at the library, and you can find more details at friendsofalibrary.org. And with that, good evening.
Okay, so that concludes that. The city clerk reminded me the speaker timer was going accidentally, and you went over your time, Mr. City Manager.
My apologies, I take after Councilmember Sheldon.
So why don't we, why don't we start with Roger? And Roger, the speaker timer is not on, so you're good to go.
Very quick, actually, I had the privilege of sitting with Robert Goss, actually, a few days ago, and we went over a deep dive with the Johnny Castro. And it's the folks who put the work in for this trail, it's gonna, it's just, bar none, hands down, the best thing I've seen in a long time. So just wanted to give that respect, and I appreciate your time on that. So thank you.
Thanks, Roger. Steve, what you got?
Good night.
Good. All right, Ernie?
Of course, I have to respond to the city manager.
Don't encourage him.
Well, first of all, I want to say kudos to the Kaiser employees over at the surgical clinic that's across from the parking lot in the Paladio. I had a procedure, or tried to have a procedure last Friday. As many of the people here know, I'm notorious for creating kidney stones, and they have to break them up every so often. Well, we attempted my fifth time at that center, only to find out that being asthmatic, it didn't help this time. But I have to, well, my problem's no problem. I just wanted to give all the kudos to the people that worked there. It must have been 20 people that interacted with me, and they could not have been better professionally or kind. And it worked out well, and I came to it quite well. On my medical history, I'm going to have some surgery on dental work, so I can maybe talk better and often. But a little joke, what politicians couldn't shut me up, that Dennis is going to do that, I'm afraid. So you might have a month or so of freedom. Now, back to serious stuff, speed in this town. Today, I just seem like I couldn't turn a corner and find an accident somewhere or something. And I'm going to ask the chief and the city manager to put the signs back out on Folsom Auburn, because it is definitely a racetrack out there again. You did it once before, and you slowed them down their back again. I mean, they think 70 mile an hour in a sports car is okay. It's not. Okay, so I wish you would do that. And I did spend quite a bit of time, you know, since December, on an inquiry by one of our residents in an apartment. I was not able to convince the apartment management to give this gentleman and his family a break. But it raises a question, and I passed some requests on to the city manager to explain to me and probably to the council, they may know, just what the scope of authority this city has on apartments management, if any. Maybe a legal issue or not. But, you know, it put a lot of conditions of approval, and Stephanie knows that, on the planning function. And then I'm not too sure we go back and check them later, or if we do, how long do we check them? Because there's a lot of stuff that I saw in this one particular incident that's just not, it's not Folsom. We shouldn't have anybody be able to do that to other people. So it's, it's an act of progress for me. I'm, I'm going to check it out. And I expect the, and ask the city manager to orchestrate the information I need from the fire department and the code enforcement and inspection department, that's the ones I want the answers from. So that's it, thanks.
All right. Great, thanks, Ernie. Carrie?
Just, I actually have nothing. Please drive carefully and have a good night.
Thank you. And I just have a few things. Was in an Eagle Court of Honor Sunday evening, and Adam Bran and David Duncan and Taylor. It's nice when we do those five at a time. I thank them for that. And the Adam kid is Adam King. We probably remember little Adam when he was much younger, but he is, he is, he is a senior at Vista. All these kids were seniors at Vista Delago High School and wanted to do their, their Eagle Court of Honor together, so it was neat to see them all.
That's great that they did it together.
It was. It was fun to do. I was also at Natomas Station Elementary School yesterday, helping hand out some awards to those kids based on responsibility and things of that nature. So, boy, there's a lot of kids in this town. You just go to one elementary school, and you watch those classes file by. And, but school districts are doing a great job with those kids. And let's see, regional transit, the train stations at the historic district of Glenn Avenue should be open by the middle of March. So appreciate everybody's patience with that. That was quite an exceptional disruption of service.
You told us the end of January.
I know. I overpromised and underdelivered on that one, so apologize for that. But, yeah, they're working hard to get that restored. And then lastly, got a really nice email from the Vice Mayor of Dublin, who was in town visiting. It was just incredibly complimentary of the community, so I will pass that along to the city manager to pass around to the council and staff folks.
Dublin, California or Ireland?
I, well, you know, I assumed it was California. Maybe it was Ireland.
No, we had people from the Dublin Chamber a few years ago.
Maybe it was Dublin, Montana. I don't know. So with that, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone.